I always like to start off with some kind of news from our city. And this last week was July 4th. We had a wonderful Light It Up celebration over at our park. And I want to thank staff because I just marveled at the number of our staff working really hard to make that a great event. We had all sorts of inflatables and we had games going on and we had food trucks and we had a band, we had sponsors. There were so many residents out. Someone told me that they thought at about 7:30 that we must have had about 10,000 people out at Light It Up. And of course, we had what I believe is the best fireworks in the Twin Cities. And so it really was a fun night and it could not have happened without our staff. So I want to thank staff for the fabulous job that they did. And thank all the residents too for coming out and making it such a fun event. And some of our council members were able to make it as well. So it was a great event to celebrate our nation's birthday. So with that, I am going to ask Mr. Anderson if he would come to the podium. He is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Anderson is Sylvia Neblet's father. So sir, we are honored to have you tonight and if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on the guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. City Clerk Sinister, please through the roll call.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Knutson. Approval of the agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to approval of our minutes. First, we have approval of the June 24th City Council Workshop Minutes.
I move approval.
Seconds.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Approval of the City Council Workshop Minutes for June 24th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the Maplewood City Council Minutes for Monday, June 24th.
Go move.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. Any further discussion? I have some discussion. I just wanted to add a little clarification. You know when I read the packet over the weekend and I saw the mayor Abrams reported that Felix the Cat was doing well? You know, maybe we could put in there just a little more information about that, that it was a local Maplewood cat that made national news. That's why I was reporting it. You know, what I envisioned was someone in 20 years looking back, why in the world would the mayor be talking about Felix the Cat? Only because it was on the national news and I thought that it was really kind of cool because Felix actually lives in Maplewood. So if we could add that clarification, I would really appreciate that.
And he's a really clean cat.
Yeah.
Mayor, let the record show that my dog Buttercup is doing well.
Thank you for that clarification, folks. Okay. Any other discussion or additions? Then all those in favor of the council minutes?
Yes, Amanda.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, then we get through that too. Appointments and presentations. The council calendar update. City Manager Coleman, that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. The council calendar update is meant to kind of provide a preview of what's happening at our upcoming meetings. On July 22nd, at the workshop, you'll hear from Public Works and Finance Department on their presentations. We're also going to have kind of the big picture overview of the 2020 budget by our Finance Director, Ms. Paulson. On August 12th, the workshop will be Public Safety and Community Development Department presentations and more work on the 2020 budget. Also, at the council meeting on August 12th, we'll have the T-21 kind of public testimony where we'll be able to hear from the folks who are license holders of tobacco products and also then the T-21 group. And then also, we'll have the presentation on the Nature Center Master Plan. Right now, for August 26th, we're planning to devote some more time to the 2020 budget. With regard to the topics of concern that staff has been working on, on your behalf, as I just mentioned, Tobacco 21 is scheduled for August 12th. The pedestrian safety plan is scheduled to be completed this fall for your review. Public Safety Director Nadeau will be giving you an update at the July 22nd meeting on our new on-street parking ordinance and the new excess calls for service ordinance. And that report will just include how many permits have been issued and how many times we have used the excess calls for service. Pet licenses, we'll be bringing that back to you at a future council meeting. Number six, the Board and Commissions interview process. This evening, I handed out a summary of the comments that I received from our, six of our advisory boards. And if you remember, back earlier this year, I think it was Mr. Councilmember Smith who brought this up, but I'm not sure which, who did it exactly, but I think it was Councilmember Smith talked about, is there a way to make the interview process, when we have openings on our boards and commissions, is there a way to maybe make it more friendly or more streamlined or just make people more comfortable? And so I did ask all of the boards and commissions as I was out doing training with them the past three months. And what you have here is just a listing of the comments that I received from the advisory commissions. And this doesn't really require any action from you, other than that I'm looking for direction. Would you like to have some time to read through these? And then if you want to put it on a workshop or council agenda for discussion, we can certainly do that. So whatever you would like to do, I would be happy to move that forward for you.
Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move it out just a little bit, given it, just, I'd like some time to review it and maybe we can talk about it at a later date.
Okay. Councilmembers, is that fine? Good.
Schedule it for a workshop or a council meeting?
I think a workshop.
Workshop? Okay. I will do that, thank you. Then the last thing I have is just to talk about some of our upcoming community events in the next couple of weeks. Actually, this week, on Wednesday, we have the White Bear Avenue Parade, which I think most of the council members are participating in, as well as, I believe, our Parks Department.
Is everyone duty there?
Everyone, I think Ms. Juneman is not. That's always fun. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and it goes down White Bear Avenue. We're also on Thursday night having the second open house regarding the fire station location study. This one will be held at the McKnight Fire Station at 600 McKnight Road North. That will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's a chance to come hear about some things that we're considering for a fire station, whether to build a new fire station or to tear down the existing one, build new. We're talking actually about closing one of the fire stations. And you could come to that and hear more about what we're considering and offer any input or concerns at that meeting. Also, the Noodles and Company is finally reopening and they have a ribbon cutting on the 17th. Another thing that is fun is the Cops and Bobbers, which is a fishing with kids activity with our police department. That's 7/17. And also, the big news or headline for us is that on July 23rd, Governor Walz is going to be here at the MCCY to come to a White Bear Chamber event. And that will be in the morning from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the 23rd. And with that, Mayor, that I don't have any other comments unless the council has some concerns or things they'd like staff to look into for them.
Councilmembers, is there anything else that you'd like to add? Okay, moving on, we have no council presentations tonight. And so Sean, I think you are on next with the Tennis Sanitation Recycling Collection Annual Review.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I have just a short presentation and then representatives from Tennis Sanitation here for this first item. So the city's contract with Tennis Sanitation requires that the city hold an annual review for the residential trash services, or excuse me, residential recycling, sorry about that. So Tennis Sanitation, they are the city's residential recycling contractor since 2011. Their current contract is a four-year contract, well, I should say, the original was 2014 to 2017. And that contract was extended an additional two years and now will end December 31st of 2019. The contract, as I stated, does require an annual review by the council and our Environmental Commission, looks at the recycling report, which details some of the implementation strategies the contractor has taken over the year to improve recycling in our city, as well as kind of a materials collection assessment. And then the work plan details items that our contractor will work on to improve recycling for the coming year. The improved service for 2018 looked at multifamily recycling education. That's always a struggle for many cities is recycling in multifamily and ensuring participation is high and that the recycling materials collected are not contaminated because in the multifamily, you know, you do see more of a turnover rate. So Tennis works with the city to notify the property owners of the multifamily homes, kind of updates them on the amount of materials that were collected throughout the year and also supplies educational signage and works with the tenants to ensure, you know, proper location and number of carts and so forth at the multifamily homes. They also worked on the promotion of small business and church recycling. So in Maplewood, we allow small businesses and churches that can have their recycling collected curbside in a cart to opt into the city's recycling program. So this year, we actually saw a real big increase. Last year, at the end of the year, we had, I think it was like 18, and now it's increased to 27. So we're really seeing an increase in that. And it's due to, in part, to the city and Tennis's outreach, particularly when we send out our business licensing, we also notify those business owners of that opportunity to opt in. Collection of Linens and Shoes. So Tennis is now subcontracting with Simple Recycle. It's a simple way of placing all your reusable clothing at the curb alongside of your recycling bid for reuse. And that's a free service to our residents. And then the recycling composite study that the contractor does yearly, identifying what materials, what are the most common materials collected in the city of Maplewood, mainly it's the cardboard and papers according to the 2018 composite study. So then, moving on to the recycling data, Tennis supplies us with a great report yearly and it identifies the amount of materials that were collected. And you can see an increase, a slight increase, from 2017 to 2018 in the single-family and multifamily recycling pounds collected per month. So that's a positive. And then the annual net tons of recycling collected is also increased for single-family, multifamily, and businesses and churches. And then on, in your staff report, there's a really detailed outline of all the materials that were collected. So we've, we really appreciate receiving all of this information because it does help us improve our recycling program. In 2019, we worked with Tennis to come up with a plan. And the one thing we wanted to look at was a recycling dumpster pilot project. So in 2020, when we start our new contract, we are proposing to allow some of the multifamily homes to have their recycling collected via a dumpster recycling container rather than the carts. And we think that, you know, there'll be maybe 10 properties that might participate in this. And these are the larger apartment complexes, maybe with 100, 150 units. And what you see right now are the carts lined up all along, you know, the side of the driveway, maybe like 20 carts. So having that dumpster as part of the program for these units will really increase the participation and I think the amount of materials collected. So Tennis has offered to work with us to do just a pilot project on one of the apartment complexes this year to see how it might work for next year. Multifamily Properties Without City Recycling Service. So I would, in our solid waste ordinance, we allow multifamily properties to participate in our recycling contract or they could supply their own recycling contract. And I'd say, right now, we probably have about 96% of the multifamilies that have opted into Maplewood's program. For 2020, we would like to look at modifying our solid waste ordinance to require that all multifamily properties participate in their cycling program, the same as we do with single-family. The reason we allowed this in the past was due to the collection of recycling in the carts as opposed to those dumpsters. So now that we're opening up that, we would like to ensure that all multifamily properties are participating in our program. So we'll be looking at doing an audit to see which of those properties are not participating and then work to notify them of the option of opting in. Special Event Recycling, so Tennis was there for our Light It Up event and they supplied the recycling carts. And each year, they do that, as well as attending other special events like our Touch a Truck event. So they continue to work with us on that. Recycling Cart and Household Audit and all the rest of these items that I'll mention all fall under kind of our preparation for new contract 2020. So some information that we'd like to gleam from our recycling contractor to prepare us for a new contract in 2020. And that would include collection routes, you know, the small business and church recycling, the names and addresses of those, which of course we have. But the walk-up service, making sure we know which of our residential properties have that walk-up service, any kind of special collection that we need to know about. And then this is something from our Environmental Commission, a recommendation that the hauler supplies with either fuel usage or mileage so that we can do a better assessment for our annual greenhouse gas assessment. And Tennis has agreed to comply with that. And then with the purchase of city recycling carts, if that moves forward, Tennis then, of course, would have to pull in all of their current recycling carts that are out on the streets. So they would do that in December if all of that falls into place. So with that, there are representatives here from Tennis who could answer any of your questions. And I am here as well, thank you.
Okay. Would you like to step up to the podium, please? Good evening. Would you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I'm Willie Tennis, Tennis Sanitation. Excuse me. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If I can't, Angela will.
I want to thank you for the comprehensive report that you gave us. Lot of data. I did have one question. In some of the data, let me get to it, it was a Appendix A, the 2018 recycling data summary, it lists plastic bags. And I don't believe that we can recycle plastic bags.
What page is that on?
It's on page 40 of 165. Now, I knew that, I know that we used to do plastic bags and then that stopped. And I know I have been taking my plastic bags over to Cub because they recycle over there. But I was wondering, because this actually lists for the Maplewood recycled, the tonnage data, 69 tons.
I'll let Angela handle that one.
Okay. Can you explain why this is reporting plastic bags?
Because in 2018 is when we transitioned from when we could take them to when we couldn't take them.
Okay. So in 2018, we did, okay.
Yep, so there is still that transition of getting them out of the recycling stream.
Okay.
Just with education and stuff. So they still trickled in throughout the year.
Okay. And is it better now? Do people, okay.
Yes, yep, yep, because we've continued with like recycling alerts and stuff like that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for that explanation.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. One question I have, and I don't know if this is for our friends from Tennis or from Ms. Finwa, but one of the things that just sort of bugs me when it comes to recycling is that very few gas stations have recycling in their garbage. I feel like every time I'm filling up my car at the gas station, those cans are just filled with recyclables. Is there any city that's doing a good job of getting recycling into gas stations or is there something we could do to encourage them to have recycling receptacles at gas stations?
Mr. Tennis, any thoughts?
I'm sure. I tried that in some of the other cities that we haul in and I got negative feedback. They didn't want extra work to separate the trash from recycling. Because I offered to put our recycling carts by the pumps and they'd all be labeled and everything, but the few that I talked to didn't have any interest. Maybe things are different here.
Madam Mayor.
Sean.
And Councilmember Smith. So I think our best bet to promote that type of recycling at businesses is to work with Waste Wise. They are an organization with the Chamber of Commerce and they'll actually go out to these businesses and do a free waste audit. They have grants up to $10,000 for carts. And they will identify, you know, ways for these organizations to save money and to recycle. And yes, that bothers me as well. And I noticed that we, up in our storage, we have a few, remember those giant bottles?
Yeah.
And we used to use them and then they just got a little too bulky and cumbersome. But they'd be perfect for, for a gas station. So maybe we'll do a, like a contest and we can promote this. So, great idea and we're going to get working on that.
I think that's a good idea.
I was thinking how many people drink sodas in their car.
Right. And want to get them out of their car and so they throw them.
Gas station.
I think that's a great idea.
So.
Anything else, councilmembers? Thank you very much for your presentation. Council, we need to, a motion to approve the 2018 recycling, Councilmember Juneman, did you have something?
Yeah, I want to call everybody's attention to the table on page 35 of 165. The environmental impact of when you recycle, I think it's kind of interesting. And this is just from 2018. If people think this doesn't do anything, they need to look again. These are pretty staggering numbers, some of them.
Do you want to highlight some of them?
Well, I won't go through the table, but the environmental impact summary, this is the totals from the 2018 recycling in Maplewood. Trees saved, 34,911. That's a lot of trees. Electricity saved, 2,047,150 kilowatt-hours. Oil, 7,312 barrels. And natural gas saved, can I count that high? I'm not sure. It looks like 23,964,152,540 BTUs of natural gas. That's a lot, just from the things that we have put into recycling rather than the trash. So anyone thinks it doesn't really happen isn't paying attention.
Thank you. Did you want to make a motion?
That's why we like to stress in our reports, people don't realize it, but like yourself, seeing those numbers, it really opens up your eyes. It's just like, wow.
It does make a difference.
It does make a difference.
With that, I will move approval and acceptance of the Tennis Sanitation Recycling Collection Annual Review 2018.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson. Approval of the 2018 Recycling Collection Year-End Report and 2019 Recycling Collection Work Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, you're up next with Republic Services for our Trash and Yard Waste Collection.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I have a short presentation for the annual review for Republic Services for Trash and Republic Services is Maplewood's residential trash and yard waste contractor for our single-family homes. They had an original five-year contract back when the city first organized its trash hauling in October 2012 to 2017. We then extended that contract until December 31st of 2019. And that contract as well requires an annual review, which includes an annual report, kind of covering the improvements that they made in 2018, materials collected. The report also goes into the number of carts we have, number of yard waste accounts, so on and so forth. And then the work plan, items that the contractor can work on in 2019 to improve our trash service. So the improved services that are outlined in the 2018 report include cart management. So the city of Maplewood, it was new to us when we organized our trash hauling and purchased 10,000 carts for our residential trash program. You know, we had never managed carts before. So over time and working with Republic Services, now we have more of a system where we can determine yearly the number of carts that need to be replaced. For a while there, we weren't purchasing additional carts. We just thought, we bought these 10,000 carts, they're good for, you know, they're warranted for seven years, we're good to go. But no, that is not the fact. I mean, these carts do, over time and through attrition, need to be replaced. You know, we have additional households and that sort of thing. So Republic Services has helped us come up with a spreadsheet that outlines the number of carts that are expected to be needed in a year. The Residential Organics Collection, Republic Services worked with the University of Minnesota and the city to partner with, I think, 200 households to do a pilot project on curbside organic collection. And as you may know, Ramsey County is working on a plan for curbside organic collection. And we hope to see that infrastructure in place by year 2022 at the earliest. So we did this pilot program with U of M and we hope to see the results of that pilot program here in 2019. And then the Fall Cleanup Campaign, yearly since the beginning of the contract, Republic Services has worked with the city for an alternative way of collecting bulky items curbside. So years ago, we used to have two cleanup events. Now we have the one spring cleanup event, which is held at Aldrich Arena. And residents can come and drive to that location and dispose of their bulky items for recycling and disposal. And then in addition to that, we thought, well, now that we have this organized system, let's work with our contractor to offer reduced-priced bulky item collection at the curb in October because there's a lot of residents, you know, that don't have the ability to transport the large items to Aldrich Arena. So offering that second option at a reduced price works out well for the month of October. And of course, they do collect bulky items year-round, but this allows residents to take advantage of that at a reduced cost. And then we really like to allow opportunity for our environmental commissioners and council members and staff to see kind of end markets for some of the products. So Republic Services worked with the city and our communications department as well to do a tour of bridging. And bridging is an organization that takes in used furniture and household items and donates those to families in need, you know, just starting out their household. So we took a tour of that and that's actually on our YouTube channel if you're interested in viewing that tour. So the trash and yard waste data, Republic Services supplies that with us monthly and then rolls that all up in a summary for the end of the year. And here are some highlights of the data. You can see that the trash collected, the tonnage was a bit higher in 2018, but we did see a few more single-family accounts. You know, we are adding some households in the city of Maplewood. The townhome and manufactured accounts, now when we organized our trash hauling, we allowed townhomes and manufactured homes to continue to contract with outside haulers, but they could opt into the city's program. So since the beginning of that, we have now 144 townhomes that have opted in, but we have, you know, probably 1,000 more that could opt in. So that's something we're looking at expanding. You can see the walk-up services, that remains pretty constant and yard waste accounts increased slightly this year. So for the 2019 Work Plan, the city staff worked with Republic Services to put together a proposal to make some improvements to our program. And again, we'd be like, looking at the Residential Organics Curbside Collection Pilot Program. We want to see the results of that to, you know, implement in our program when we roll that out in 2020, hopefully. Again, the Sustainable Trash Cart Management Plan, continuing to work on that. Again, the Sustainable Trash Cart Management Plan, continuing to work on that. The council looked at that cart purchase last year. We hope that that's the yearly purchase for the carts. The Fall Cleanup Campaign, Republic Services will work with us once again for October, holding that Fall Cleanup Campaign. And then the other items are outlined as items that we'd like to work with Republic Services for the transition of a new contract. You know, supplying the city with the trash billing accounts, yard waste billing, the walk-up service, the opt-out, townhomes and manufactured homes. And then again, review by the Environmental Commission asked for the fuel and/or mileage so that we can better assess our greenhouse gas assessment. So with that, we do have a representative from Republic Services that is here tonight and I am available for questions as well.
Thank you. Good evening. Could you please state your name for us?
Romack Franklin with Republic Services.
Any comments that you'd like to make?
No, we've, I guess I would say we've enjoyed working with the city over the last seven years and we look forward to many more years with the city.
Thank you. Any comments, anyone? Thank you for the report. Oh, there's someone, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just happened to have a great experience this week, wanted to share with Republic. So I was putting hardwood floors in my house in the upstairs, did it myself, and I tore out all the carpet. And so I was planning on trailering it all down to the dump and I thought, you know, I better call Republic and just see. And so I called in and called into customer service and it was pretty busy and I punched the numbers. And then it came on and said, hey, we'll call you back. Just hang up, we'll call you back within the next hour or so. So I get a nice callback, so I didn't have to sit on hold. And I said, I've got about five rolls of carpet I need to get rid of that I pulled out of my house. And it was $5 a roll to have them pick it up on my curb. And I was, so I just, I don't always know that the residents will be able to understand what a great deal we have with our contract. And, you know, I'm sure that Republic would love to charge us more, but, you know, I think the work that Ms. Finwall and many others have done to create these contracts, it is a really good deal. And, you know, every time I call in, whether it's, you know, for my annual yard waste or bulky items like this, I'm always shocked at what a great deal it is. So to our friends over in St. Paul who are struggling a bit right now, I have to say, it's actually worked out pretty well for us over here in Maplewood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I would just add how much I enjoy the yard waste service. That, you know, trimming branches and lawn mowing and weeds and all of those kinds of things. And I will say that we, I share a yard waste container with my neighbors. And we seem, our goal, it's an unspoken goal, is to fill that thing up every week. And we do. And how nice it is that none of us have to then take it down to, you know, composting because you folks pick it up. It makes it so convenient and it's actually kind of a neighborhood goal as to whether or not we're going to fill it up this week. And we always seem to fill it up. So it is very nice and.
And Mayor, you know, you get the receptacle plus five bags.
Yes.
I know that, yeah.
I mean, it's a smoking deal.
It's a great deal.
It is a very good deal. It is a very good deal.
I'm glad to see you're taking advantage of it.
Yes, definitely taking advantage of it. And, you know, then it gets back to the environment in a healthy way. As opposed to, anyone out there, you're not supposed to be putting it in your garbage. You're supposed to be putting it in a waste, you know, yard waste receptacle. So, thank you very much for that and thank you for this report. We appreciate it.
I move approval and acceptance of the Republic Services Trash and Yard Waste Collection Annual Review 2018.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, motion to approve the 2018 Trash and Yard Waste Collection Year-End Report. Almost needed a little garbage assistance up here, but we avoided that. And 2019 Trash and Yard Waste Collection Work Plan. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We now are on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved the consent agenda items one through six by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. We now move on to new business and we have an on-sale wine license for Tono, which is a new restaurant that I just drove by on White Bear Avenue this week. So, City Clerk Sint, would you please give us the staff report on this?
Thank you, council and mayor. For your consideration tonight, we have an approval request for an on-sale wine license for Tono LLC doing businesses Tonos Pizzeria Plus Cheesesteaks at 3088 White Bear Avenue, Suite B. And just for reference, this is the middle tenant space in the building of the old Baker Square site. Tonos has applied also for a 3-2 on-sale license, which does not require council approval. But the combination of a wine license and a 3-2 license allows them to serve strong beer. The owners of Tonos Pizzeria are working with the city's building, health, and fire departments to make sure all the necessary permits are met and all the codes requirements have been met also. And while working on the details with these departments, city council approval is being sought as another step towards issuance. Lastly, once all city approvals are reached, the state will be notified as a state inspection and state approval is required for the city to issue the wine license. For approval purposes, background investigations have been conducted on the four owners. One of the owners, Antonio Gambino, is also the establishment manager. Nothing was identified that would prohibit the issuance of these licenses. They will be meeting with the chief. They have not been able to connect yet with the Fourth of July and everything, but they will be meeting with the chief to go over the general expectations of the service of alcohol. And typically, when a wine license is in the make here, we also will see state alcohol enforcement working with them as they will go out and do an onsite inspection. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to approve the issuance of an on-sale wine license for Tono LLC doing businesses Tonos Pizzeria Plus Cheesesteaks at 3088 White Bear Avenue, Suite B, contingent on satisfactory results from fire, building, and health. And tonight, we have two members here and Antonio Gambino is here to answer questions along with one of the other owners.
Gentlemen, would you like to come up to the microphone, please? Could you please introduce yourself?
Aye, Antonio Gambino. Thank you.
Tell us about your business.
Oh, so we're opening up a pizzeria plus cheesesteaks. We plan to serve beer and wine. We're using cerly beer and then just a red and white wine. Our plan is just to have a little pairing with pizza and cheesesteaks. We only have two taps, nothing serious. Just something for adults to come and enjoy a pizza and a cheesesteak, a real pizza.
And when do you plan on opening?
Our tentative day is this Saturday. Whether we get the license by then isn't important. We just won't serve beer or wine at that time, obviously. But our grand opening's the 27th.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman is our resident council member that likes to welcome our.
With conditions.
With conditions, our new establishments that are going to be serving liquor in our cities.
Certainly.
And we're pretty amicable as a council, but until there is a liquor license violation. So Councilmember Juneman can explain that to you.
Do you or any of the other owners have experience in serving alcoholic beverages?
No. I currently have four other restaurants. None of those serve alcohol. However, one of them is in Dingey Town at the University of Minnesota, so though we don't serve it, kids do come in intoxicated. We have a late-night license to be open and serve pizza and cheesesteaks. So we have experience with dealing with.
So are you going to be going through some training, I hope, about this?
Um, yeah, certainly. I mean, having four locations, obviously, I can't be at every single one. So training and procedures and training, you know, managers and staff, and that's obviously very important. And that goes with everything, like food safety, which in my book is equally, is important.
While some people might say that a wine and beer license isn't as dangerous, liquor's liquor. And we are pretty amiable, but like she said, if you fail a liquor compliance, we get real mean. And I'm the meanest one, who's been here the longest with enough practice to be mean. That's a little tongue-in-cheek, but not totally. We do not want the youth in our community served any kind of alcohol. That's all there is to it. No, no, no.
Absolutely.
So when you meet with the chief, whatever he says you have to do, you have to do.
Absolutely.
And if you have to come back and stand in front of us when you failed, it won't be pretty. And they might have some mercy, but it's guaranteed that I won't.
I'll be.
But I'm anxious to see your business. I just don't want you to do anything stupid.
We won't. We won't, certainly not. And we'll train staff appropriately.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, she means business. However, I will say, I also want to say thank you for taking the chance and opening your business here in Maplewood. And we're excited to have you.
We look forward to it.
We had a good chat before the meeting and while cheese whiz is optional on a Philly cheesesteak, I was reminded, as I'm sure Mr. Sheeran would agree, that a Philly cheesesteak without cheese whiz is just plain wrong.
It's required.
So I don't know that we need to pass an ordinance on that, but it might be something we want to consider going forward. But no, seriously, you know, as much as we do take these regulations and enforcement very seriously, we also are very excited to have you and wish you the best of luck in your business.
Thank you. We definitely look forward to probably serving Maplewood.
Do I have a motion, council?
So moved.
Motion to approve the on-sale wine license for Tono LLC doing businesses Tonos Pizzeria and Cheesesteaks at 3088 White Bear Avenue, Suite B. They're right in the middle. Moved by Neblet, seconded by Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to Maplewood and we're going to try your cheesesteaks.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item is a revocation hearing for Comforting Hands Massage. And Mr. Beatty, do you want to start this off with the procedural aspects? Well, I'll explain to you what's going to happen tonight, is that we're going to have staff presentations. Mr. Beatty is going to make a presentation. Commander Short Reed is going to make a presentation. And then council members, we will have an opportunity to ask questions of our staff. And then we are going, I'm going to ask Ms. Yang and her representative to come to the microphone and they can make a presentation. And then council, we will have an opportunity to then ask them questions. And then we will have a council discussion. And after all of that, we will consider the proposed motion that is before us tonight. So that's kind of an outline of what we're going to do. So, Mr. Beatty, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about the process, what we're doing.
Madam Mayor, council, what you have before you tonight is a staff recommendation with regard to the revocation of two licenses. One is a license for a massage center and the second is a license for a massage therapist. Ms. Lejun Yang is the holder of the massage therapist license. She is also the owner and operator of an establishment called Comforting Hands Massage, which was located at 2225 White Bear Avenue. There was a recent event which is detailed in your staff report. There is a summary of the event in a police report. There's a copy of a criminal complaint that was issued against Ms. Yang. You've also got a very detailed resolution in your packet. The process that's before you tonight is an administrative hearing. It is not a public hearing. It's a hearing in which both the staff and the licensee and/or her representative are allowed to speak, but not something that's open to the general public. The two bases for staff's recommendation are inappropriate touching of a client as well as allowing unlicensed therapists to operate from that business. Tonight's consideration that the council have to undergo is not a criminal process. There is, as you see in your packet, a copy of a complaint issued against the licensee. That will have to play itself out in the courts and would be subject to the standard that's applicable for criminal matters. That is not the basis for your decision tonight. Tonight is, again, it's an administrative hearing. The standard is predominance or preponderance of the evidence. And that basically means, is it more likely to be true or not? 50% plus one, if you want to quantify that. That's the standard that you have to apply. That's the end of my report. As the mayor indicated, Commander Short Reed is here and can answer details about the police matter. And we're available for questions or comments before or after the presentation from the licensee.
Thank you. Commander Short Reed.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I came tonight on behalf of Chief Nadeau, who's out of town. As far as a presentation goes, as Mr. Beatty pointed out, your packet contains a memo from Commander Quam to Chief Nadeau dated June 12th. In that memo, it lays out the facts behind the investigation as it was brought to the Maplewood Police Department. It's a business that we've received anonymous complaints upon. And our VSAT officer, Detective Fritzi, the violent crime enforcement team with Ramsey County, worked with his officers that he works with Ramsey County to investigate it further, to the point that they established enough information based upon a site visit to conduct a search warrant, which occurred on June 3rd. And in that, at that point, that's when an arrest was made of Ms. Yang. The Maplewood City Prosecutor ultimately filed the criminal complaint against her, which you see in the packet as well. But going forward, as Mr. Beatty points out, the criminal complaint is separate from what's going on this evening. That will be handled outside of this environment. That's handled in Ramsey County Court. Going forward, the licenses before the business and for the individual is what this administrative hearing is about.
Thank you, Commander Short Reed. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for City Attorney Beatty or Commander Short Reed? Seeing no questions, Ms. Yang and her representative, would you come to the microphone and please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor. Madam Mayor and city council members, my name is Don Zhou and I'm an attorney representing the business. And Ms. Yang opts not to appear in front of the public TV. So she authorized me to answer questions later on if the council members and Madam Mayor has any questions. And if I don't know the answer, I'll ask the Madam Mayor and the city council's indulgence for me to consult with her and answer the questions. And I'm here today that I thank Mr. Beatty to, I couldn't explain it better than what Mr. Beatty has explained to you, that this is not a criminal case, but I would also understand, I would also ask the city council members to keep this in mind. You know, the cardinal principle is we hold very dear in this country that one is presumed innocent until proven guilty. So in terms of the statements that in the package, at this point, we're not admitting to it or contesting in the court of law. So we're asking this council not to convict my client based on those allegations. That's not verified or corroborated. And so that's in terms of her personal license. I would request this council to think about it in terms of revoke her license based on the statement, the police statement there. I would, if there's any way the council members can suspend her license. can suspend her license until we finish the criminal cases, and then you can revoke if we're guilty, but if we were able to defend her rights in the court of law, then, you know, obviously that we don't have to come back to the city to go through another process to get, get her license reinstated, but I would just, I'm here today just to ask the Madam Mayor and city councils to not pass judgment on her based on the police report, I'll assume that that's happened, I understand, this is an administrative hearing, we adhere to a different standards, which is the 51% preponderance of evidence, but it, this also has some kind of consequences in the eyes of the public and, and the city, for instance, if her license is revoked, she has, she will face consequences, not only here, but somewhere else. So in terms of her personal licenses, I would request this council, as council members, and maybe there's a different way to deal with the situation. Now, in terms of the business license, we admit there is a violation at the businesses, but let me explain a little bit what, what was going on. The women that found in the business, they came here to look for jobs, and the business owner did apply their licenses for them, I'm sure the city would have records of the applications, and they were denied, the licenses, and so as a result, they're in the process of going out, because this woman came from other states, they don't have anywhere to stay, so they stay with the businesses, they stay, owner, they, during the daytime, they stay at the business, but they're at the point of, of going, and when this investigation going out, but there, it was not an excuse to say there was no violations, we admit there was violations, so there was, if there's action taken in terms of the business license, we do not contest it, and we're, we're not asking the city council to take any other actions, but in terms of the personal massage licenses, and also the, the statements by the police, I would ask the city council to be, in a sense, to take a lenient attitude in terms of, now we're passing a judgment upon a business owner who, we have a case going through the court systems, we're contesting, we're not admitting those statements. With that, if there's no questions, then I'll just close my statement.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Cho? Councilmember Smith?
My question is for City Clerk Sant.
Okay.
Ms. Sant, do we have any record of, of those license applications?
Mayor and council, at this moment, I cannot verify that, I would say if they were denied, it was, if they did apply and they were denied, it was because the schooling that they had was not from an accredited school, that does happen on somewhat of a regular basis, however, I, I don't have that information in front of me.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
I guess, I see this essentially as just willfully violating the state, or the city ordinance, whether they applied or not really doesn't matter, they were actually conducting what we thought was therapy without a license, this seems kind of clear to me.
Council, any other council members? Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me, I don't know, perhaps this is for Mr. Beatty, we are to take the memo from Commander Quam as accurate at this point, aren't we not?
Madam Mayor, council, I think that's the, the essence of your consideration tonight, again, do you consider the statements in that report that are backed up, to some degree, by the criminal complaint, to be more likely to be true or not to be true? You know, and again, let me, let me emphasize what I said before, that the criminal matter has to do with a charge of prostitution, which is a gross misdemeanor, we're not here to decide that, and, and when I said earlier what the bases for denial of the license or for revocation of the license, I didn't mention prostitution, what I said was inappropriate touching, which is a separate basis in the ordinance, as well as the employment, which has been admitted, of, of unlicensed therapists.
Thank you for the verification.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is again for Mr. Beatty, if you please, so there's, essentially, I see two violations here, correct, so there's the violation of, of unlicensed therapists, and, and then the allegation of inappropriate touching, are those specific to the two different licenses? So, can the personal license be revoked on the basis of violating the, the business license with, with having the unlicensed therapists, or are they separate issues with separate, is, is, does the inappropriate touching only tie to the individual, and does the unlicensed therapist only tie to the business?
City Attorney Beatty?
Madam Mayor, council, I think that's a good question, in both cases, the ordinance says that the, the business license, as well as the therapist's license, can be revoked for cause, not very specific, sort of a general standard, so I think you're free to draw those conclusions. I would say, though, that the employment or use of unlicensed therapist is more closely linked to the operation of the business, and goes to whether that license should be revoked, and I would say that the conduct of the licensee, in terms of the inappropriate touching, probably relates more directly to her personal license as a therapist.
Councilmember Juneman? On page 229 of 165, section D at the top, says, "City Code Section 14-1449 provides that any violation of the requirements contained in the city's massage therapy regulations shall be caused for suspension, revocation, or nonrenewable massage center license and a massage therapist license." So therein lies our 129, total, I would think, job tonight, it's all very clear in City Code.
Anything else, councilmembers? Councilmember Neblet?
I think this is a question also for Mr. Beatty, it gives us the options of denial, suspension, or revocation of such license, do we know if this is a first offense, or does it matter?
Madam Mayor, council, I'm not sure of that, I mean, denial is not on the table in the sense that the license has already been issued, you know, what we're talking about is, I think the options are suspension, rev, which would be for some limited period of time, revocation, or taking no such action, I don't know the, the answer to the question about whether there's been any prior conduct.
Councilmember Juneman?
I think that's an old line.
Oh, okay.
He's a veteran, I've lost my marbles.
Is there anything else? Councilmember Smith?
Mayor, just a question of process, so right now, we're asking clarifying questions, are we then going to discuss this as a council, as far as where our feelings are, is that the next step, or?
The next step is to discuss as a council, I just want to make sure that we have any questions for Mr. Cho.
Just making sure I understand the flaw.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Cho, did you, anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, there's just one thing to add, I just consulted with the owner of the business, and she said this is the first time ever, and since her operation, and I would just add one more thing, as Mr. Beatty said, her personal behavior, I understand the City Code to say, anything happening with the businesses, you could revoke the massage licenses, but I, I think in terms of revoking the business licenses with the violation there, we're not contesting it, but with the personal massage licenses, I would ask the council to consider whether there was a personal liability in this case based on the, the statement, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, councilmembers, let's have a discussion, who'd like to go first?
I, I'll jump in, I guess, I think where my head is at right now, is that regardless of the personal behavior, the judgment shown in, in employing unlicensed therapists is enough for me for both licenses, it's, it's, it's the running of the business and the showing the, the poor judgment of, of having those unlicensed therapists there, I, I do believe Commander Quam's statement, and I do believe that, that it is more likely than not that both incidents occurred, but even if I didn't believe that, the fact that, the situation that the, that they have stipulated to in this situation is enough for me to revoke both licenses, and that is where my head is at.
Councilmembers, any, Councilmember Juneman?
I'm pretty much in the same camp with him, I'm just worried about any business, when you establish a business in a city, you have to know the code, and when you sign on, you're acknowledging that the code exists, and you're going to follow it, and that did not happen, so it isn't, it's fairly, I think, cut and dried.
Councilmember Neblet?
I do, I too believe Commander Quam's statement, it is a harsh reality that taking away someone's ability to work for what they've been trained for is a harsh measure. I, like Councilmember Juneman said, if you are going to work in this city, you need to know what is required, and what should be done, and what should not be done, and I have a hard time believing that Ms. Yang didn't know what the rules were, I guess.
Thank you, Councilmember Juneman?
That's my old line.
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to hear my marbles voice again.
No, I, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to add, sex trafficking and the exploitation of women is a significant and real problem here in Maplewood and in the Twin Cities, and if Ms. Yang or any of these other four women are victims and have been victimized through this process, I hope that, as a member of the bar, that we can help them find the resources they need to break that cycle. It does not mean you're not responsible for your actions in this case, but I do believe that it is important that we help, help women who are in that situation, if that is the case, to find the services that they need, because I do have empathy for the fact that there are a lot of women and girls in our society who are in really terrible situations and are, and need help, so.
You know, I haven't weighed in yet on it, but I want, I really appreciate the comments of my fellow councilmembers, because, Councilmember Neblet, you're exactly correct, this is a very big decision, because this impacts on someone's livelihood, nevertheless, it is imperative that we have these ordinances, we have these rules for a reason, and, you know, the fact that, what troubled me the most is that there were four women that were there, and I also am concerned about the, the whole potential, now, we don't know what that looks like in terms of sex trafficking, but it is a very big concern to me, in reading Commander Quam's report, they're all of Chinese descent, and they were there with suitcases, and it is very troubling to me, and for that reason, I believe that it is appropriate that we take this action in terms of not only revoking the license for the massage center, but also revoking the massage therapist's license. It's just, it, I don't see that we have any other alternative, I really do not.
Councilmember Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor, another thing to consider here is, I absolutely agree, revoking both is, is absolutely consistent, but there are a lot of people, including my sister-in-law, that train very hard to be a masseuse, and she runs and operates in an absolutely legitimate business, and the crossover of people thinking they're going to a masseuse to get something else is pathetic, so I think we need to stand up and say that this profession is legitimate, and continues to stress to be legitimate, so I think we absolutely have to revoke this license.
Thank you, Councilmember Knutson, I think that that's a very good point, I, this certainly doesn't reflect on the other massage therapists that are working in our community, simply for what hap, what was happening over at this particular business in our community. Councilmembers, do I have a motion?
I move, excuse me, I move the resolution on page 129 of 165, Maple City Council, based on all the evidence and testimony provided during this revocation hearing and the factual findings and conclusion of the law contained herein, and on the entire record of this matter hereby resolves as follows, massage center license is issued by the city of Lejun Yang, for Comforting Hands Massage is hereby revoked effective immediately, and massage therapist license issued by the city of Lejun Yang, Yang is hereby revoked effective immediately, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to provide the licensee with a copy of this resolution to serve as notice of the license revocations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, I don't think I have to repeat that, do I, City Clerk Sant, that's pretty long, okay. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to the ordinance for request, requesting a reasonable accommodation that we just discussed during our workshop, who is taking this one?
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so as you, as you mentioned, this is just a follow-up to the previous workshop item, in your packet tonight is an ordinance, a draft ordinance, which would amend the City Code to provide a reasonable accommodation process for, under the federal law statute, as this ordinance is drafted, it is consistent with the previous council discussion, and that it would, the, the permit would be reviewed and administered and approved or denied by city staff, and an applicant would be allowed to an appeal, a denial of that permit by staff to the city council, but that's the only appeal process that's included in this draft ordinance, and also based on that discussion, we would bring back a fee schedule amendment with a proposed fee for that license at a future date, but that, again, is how the, the draft ordinance in your packet is, is presented tonight, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions? Okay, seeing none, this requires two motions, do I have a motion, they're on page 139.
Excuse me, I move the ordinance amending chapter, excuse me, 44, to provide a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation pursuant to federal law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson, to approve an ordinance amending, amending chapter 44 of the City Code to provide a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation pursuant to federal law, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, is the second motion?
I further move resolution authorizing publication of this ordinance by title and summary.
Second on that?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson, to approve the resolution authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Moving on, Mr. Thompson, this is yours, concerning legacy twin home at 30, 380 Skilman Avenue East.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so the property owner has submitted a development application for this property, requesting two items, a rezoning of the property and a variance from the city's lot with requirement in that zoning district, just a, a quick overview of the property, it's highlighted in your screen here, this is a parcel that's located on Skilman Avenue, it's actually a vacant parcel today, there was a previous house on the, on the lot back before in the 1970s. There was a previous house on the, on the lot back before in the 1970s. It's about 20,000 square feet. It's currently zoned R1, which is a single dwelling zoning district and guided in the comp plan for low-density residential uses. Just to show a couple unique characteristics about this lot, first, it is larger in size than the surrounding lots, at over 20,000 square feet. It's one of the largest lots in the neighborhood. It does also have three, frontage on three different streets, so on both Skillman, Arkright, and Edgemont. And then, as you can see on the zoning map, this is a neighborhood that has some varying zoning. So the properties to the south are kind of double frontage lots facing on the two streets. Those are all zoned R1. To the east, you have an R3 zoning, which is a twin home zoning district, or excuse me, a medium-density zoning district greater than twin home. And then to the north, you have a mix of R1 single-family and then also some R2, which would allow for, for two-family dwellings on those lots. So an area that kind of is, is kind of a mix of different zoning and land use, land uses. So the application from the property owner is to, essentially what they're proposing to do is to construct a single twin home on the property. So it would be one structure with two separate dwelling units. This is just a preliminary rendering of what that potential twin home could look like. And then they did submit a proposed, oops, site plan, again, preliminary site plan, showing that there would essentially have attached garages and then a dwelling unit on, on either side. So again, just one single structure with two dwelling units in it. Because the existing R1 district does not allow for twin homes or double dwellings, they are requesting the rezoning to R2. That zoning district is consistent with the low-density land use designation in the city's comp plan. But in conjunction with the R2 zoning, the existing lot doesn't meet the lot width requirement of 100 feet. So they're all also requesting the variance from 100 feet down to 80 feet. So with that, in your packet, there is a draft ordinance which would approve the rezoning and then a resolution that would also approve the lot width variance. This application did go before the Planning Commission, they did hold a public hearing. There was no public testimony or public comments made at the public hearing, but the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the application, as submitted by the applicant. So with that, we do recommend approval of those two documents and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, a little chatty tonight, but I have to say, I'm supportive of this. I think what sort of stuck in my craw, reading through the report on this one, was some of the comments on renters. And up until about a year and a half ago, I was a renter here in Maplewood. And there's a lot of really darn good people who rent houses here in Maplewood. And frankly, the vast majority of people who rent houses are dang good people, who take care of their homes, are good neighbors. And yeah, we got some problems. And that's why we're working on the rental licensing program, that's why we're working, that's why we passed the new system ordinance, and that's why I've been wanting to do that, is partly to protect renters, partly to give landlords good guidance. But frankly, the biggest reason for me is to give homeowners comfort that neighbors are going to be good neighbors and that there is a guideline around that. So I think, you know, I am just that much more committed to our rental licensing program as a critical thing that we need to do. And I just, I just hope that homeowners and folks really reach out to folks who rent their neighborhood because they're good people, they're neighbors just like you, they're working folks, and to be afraid of having renters in your neighborhood, I think, is prejudicial. I'm going to say that word. It's prejudicial. And, you know, it was something that came up in my, when I was running for office, as a reason I shouldn't be in office here, which I think is ridiculous. And, you know, so it is, it is a little personal for me, but, but I do think that whether you own or rent a home in Maplewood, you're my neighbor. And the reality is, we don't have enough rentals for the folks who want to live here. And if we can create some new, good, quality housing with a good quality landlord who's going to take care of it and make sure we have good people renting there, I'm all for it. So thank you for doing what you're doing and I hope some folks will think about that a little bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, Mayor. Does any, have any background on RPS Legacy? Because it says in the letter of application from the operations manager, "RPS Legacy can be held accountable to construct and maintain a quality residence consistent with the needs of the neighborhood." So do we know anything about any other places they own or?
Mayor and counsel, I don't have personal examples of RPS. I don't, I do know as part of the Planning Commission, the applicant did provide a number of examples of other similar properties they owned in the Maplewood area and that those were reviewed and they did highlight those as part of the Planning Commission's review.
Thank you, I'm glad to know that. And I like, Mr. Smith, I think it's danger zone to say if you rent something, you're bad. And to people who question it, who now own something, I always say, "Did you ever rent anything?" And most of them say, "Yes." So then I, my next question is, "So does that make you bad?" It's a logical conclusion if you're going to condemn someone else who rents. I happen to be, or we in my neighborhood happened to be the victims of a house, kitty crawling from us, it's been everything. Owned, rented, it doesn't seem to matter. It was a curse on the neighborhood, till we cleaned it up. We just went after the people and said, "Knock it off, look around, everybody takes care of their yards, you'll notice the trim is painted, blah, blah, we don't throw chairs out in the backyard." Son of a gun. It kind of looks like the rest of the neighborhood now. It's up to neighborhoods to take care of themselves. And if there are factual code issues, then you call them in and we help take care of them. But to just make up an attitude because you don't like the fact that somebody rents is wrong. And we can't be a party to that. I just, I like, Mr. Smith, I'm like, "Are you serious? Some of the things people said? I mean, making basically statements that things are wrong if you rent? No, we can't do that." And again, this is a mixed neighborhood, so it's not like it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. The only reason you might notice it is it's going to be new and nice. I mean, oh, really? And a lot of, unfortunately, some of the other rentals in the neighborhood are older. That's nobody's fault, they're just older. But there's a lot of them in the neighborhood, and there's a whole street of rental town homes that are quite well taken care of. I know people who lived in those same units for 20 years and they rent. They haven't been horrible people for 20 years and they still not. So I just, I don't see any point in using that as a justification.
Thank you. I would concur with my fellow council members. I was a little disappointed, actually, to read the comments from some of the residents. I think personally that the design seems to be a very good use of this unique piece of property and I think that it would fit in very nicely into the neighborhood. And when I was reading this, it sounded like an us versus them. And what I really saw in between the lines was that if there are code enforcement issues where, you know, things are not kept up, the grass is too long, there's, you know, junk or cars out in the, in the yard, then that's what code enforcement is for and that's what, you know, we have a brand-new code enforcement person who just started today, but that's what our code enforcement is for, to make sure that properties are kept up, that they're clean, that they're livable. And so what really our code enforcement issue should be dealt with is code enforcement and not just lump people into, you know, renting is bad. It just, I was really disappointed in some of the comments because it just seemed so misguided. And I'm, I'm glad that we can add housing and I think that this would be a very nice addition for, for this neighborhood. I too, I, in fact, I, when I met with City Manager Coleman this morning to talk about the council packet, one of the things that I brought up was that, you know, this fall, it is important that we do the rental housing, that we consider that, that we bring that back to the council because we need to have some minimum standards. And I think that that will go a long way in helping people to feel that, you know, neighborhoods are going to be kept up. And I think that that's something that we can do as a council. And so that really is an important thing for me, that we take a look at that and that we wrap that up this fall. And I certainly, when I was reading my packet this weekend, I was hopeful that maybe when we have a rental licensing ordinance, that we won't get these kinds of comments that just don't seem that they are very neighborly and very welcoming to people in the neighborhood. And so with that, folks, do we have a motion? We have two motions tonight on this. They're on page 146. Then I will move to approve the attached zoning map amendment, ordinance amendment, which approves the rezoning from single dwelling R1 to double dwelling R2 to allow a twin home to be constructed at 380 Skillman Avenue East.
Second.
Moved by Abram, seconded by Juneman, the motion that I just read. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the attached variance resolution which approves a 20-foot lot width to allow a twin home to be constructed at 380 Skillman Avenue East.
Second.
Moved by Smith. That was pretty good, but I heard it on this year, I heard it from Neblet first. Motion to approve-
It was a coral response, actually.
The attached, you were kind of low tonight there, your voice. Attached variance resolution which approves a 20-foot lot width to allow a twin home to be constructed at 380 Skillman Avenue East. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, council members, we have no further work to do tonight. And so I'm going to note this for the record, that we are done at 8:25. Thank you, fellow council members, and good night. We're adjourned.